Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. The Greater Victoria School District wishes to recognise and acknowledge the Esqamal and Tsangmee's nations on these traditional territories we live, we learn, and we do our work. Before we begin the follow-up of the meeting, I'd like to begin by introducing the table, and we'll start with President BC Ha.
I'm Bert McMillan.
I'm Tara Arkey, President of the Greater Victoria Teachers Association. Elaine Leonard, one of the school trustees.
Deborah Nor, school trustee.
Catherine Alpuck, school trustee.
Vera Horstman, school trustee.
John Yeagman, superintendent of schools.
Peggy Orch, school trustee.
George Anfield, Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you, Natalie McCall, Secretary.
Keta Thorey, one of the school trustees.
Michael Lyer, one of the school trustees.
Diane McNally, trustee.
Tom Burris, trustee.
Joe Rose, President of the Global 382.
Melanie Houston, President of my specialist association.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to or additions to the agenda for the students' meeting? I have trustee Horstman and then trustee Nor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be making an amendment to motion C2. And the amendment is going to involve a more legal description of the term right-of-way. The motion that we passed that... Would you like me to bring it out? Would you like me to bring up the motions on the agenda?
Through you, Madam Chair. I have the various words of the flash icon screen when it comes to this trusty Horstman says to add the legal description and change the terminology from a statutory right-of-way to a ruleful right-of-way.
All right, then we'll wait until we come to that motion for the appropriate legal terminology, and we'll note that on the agenda, that amendment to motion C1B2. Uh, trustee Nor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to add a motion from the floor, and my motion... My motion is that the Board of Education of School District 61 write a letter to the Minister of Education calling on the government to repeal Bill 22 and instead have an independent mediator appointed through the Labor Relations Board. I have motion and my rationale to hand up.
I have trustee Leonard and trustee McNally.
Through the Chair, I just wanted to know why we weren't given a customary forty-eight hours notice for motion, as I'm assuming that might have been ready by that point in time? Is that a normal process? Is that allergic to a conversation or the data table?
Yes, I apologize for the short notice on this. It was just something that I was able to put together after having had some time to read and consult and consider the bill and the implications.
Thank you. Trustee McNally?
Chair, I'm going to offer a trivia minute, but I don't think it can second it down.
It's not appropriate at this point. We're just changing the... We're just adding it to the agenda, and we'll deal with the technicalities when we come to it.
Thank you.
Trustees Thorey Mkhungu and then trustee Horstman.
I'm wondering whether under new business, we could put on... Kind of get an update on the district's position in regards to reports first?
We'll add that to superintendent's report. And trustee Horstman?
We were circulating two motions here by trustees Nor and Thorey Mkhungu, and they're not on the agenda, so I can't see them.
Trustee Nor?
I had provided a notice of motion for the maybe one, and I haven't handed out the other.
All right, so we have two amendments then to the agenda, and that is the legal wording on the motion with respect to the... What currently says the right-of-way, and we also have a new notice for motion that trustee Nor will present when we come to that area of the agenda. Are there any further changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can we accept the agenda as amended? All those in favor? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 20th, 2012 minutes. Do I have a motion to move acceptance, second here? Are there any errors, omissions? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing no one to speak, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is student achievement, and I would ask that Principal Colin Roberts from Esqamal High School come to the podium, please, and thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, and ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the seat. It's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening Tessa Charleswell, student at Esqamal High School. And if one had to choose a phrase to describe a multi-talented, I think, would be the one that best would portray Tessa and the work that she does. She has a number of interests: architecture, fine arts, she's very skilled in languages, global citizenship, and student advocacy. She's a member of the school's challenge and French immersion programs, and has been since joining the school in her grade nine year, and has maintained throughout that entire time a five-point-zero grade point average and a ninety-eight percent academic average, so obviously one of our top-ranked students, and consequently has won not just many academic awards in the school, but service awards as well. Outside of school, she is a highly skilled ballet dancer, at the very highest technical level with a local company, and has won provincial awards for ballet. She's a member of many different clubs and societies at the school, including Esqamal students caring about peace and the environment. She is a member of the interact team, a peer tutor, and this year has been one of the student representatives on the school planning council. Outside of school, she's been involved in several international ventures. She's a member of the Victoria International Development Association, and probably the most outstanding trip that I'm aware of that Tessa's made was when she went to Zambia for some humanitarian aid activities. She's very broadly travelled, having been to South Korea, France, the US, the Netherlands, the UK, and Italy, as well as throughout the United States. But the thing that probably has brought Tessa to public attention in Victoria to the highest degree is the fact that she was a winner of the Lorenz Scholarship this year, and as many of you may know, that's a highly prestigious award with thirty maximum awarded across the entire country, probably the Canadian equivalent of the Rhodes Scholarship, coming with a $75,000 award. Since that time, just very recently, in this last week, Tessa has been to New York and Boston, has been accepted by Columbia, and we're hoping and crossing our fingers that she will also receive offers from Yale and from Harvard, so as you can see, a highly, highly talented student, but a very modest and charming, engaging one as well. I'm sure you'll enjoy hearing her speak.
I heard your introductions were in order, so I'm just going to jump right to it. As I look back on my four years at Esqamal High School as a grade twelve, I can't do it without any nostalgia. I find that my fantastic education is not only based on the academic rigor, but also on the extracurricular activities that Esqamal offers. At Esqamal, the teachers and students and staff recognize that education is not only about multiplication tables and thesis statements, but about the development of the individual. With over fifty clubs, sports, and theatre groups, ESQ offers outstanding opportunities to get involved in the school community, as well as in the local and global communities, and really along the way, discover who you are. Tonight, I'd like to speak briefly about these opportunities for involvement in the school and local and global communities, as well as how this has impacted and inspired me. As I mentioned before, Esqamal has a multitude of diverse clubs, ranging from the slam team to escape, to interact, and many of which, though, focus on local and global service. I personally, as you heard, am very involved in the global community. I'm president of Escape and the international director of Interact, the youth branch of Gorden. These clubs, along with many others like Me2Me, seek to educate students about the world's needs and empower them to meet these needs. They offer educational windows that look far beyond the academic classroom and engage them in action rather than in simple road learning. Initiatives like the Zambian Report Station Initiative, the textbook drives, Vietnamese lunches, the Spread the Net Campaign, they pepper the school and entreat the students to engage and be advocates for positive global change. But of course, I could speak passionately about this for hours, so let me move on. In the local community, we have Esqamal Leadership as an example, a student organization that encourages involvement in the Esqamal and Victoria communities. The class, which meets every Thursday at seven-thirty in the morning, offers opportunities by posting volunteer positions at events such as the Buccaneer Day Parade, the Tapestry Conference, the Esqamal Light Up, giving students the option of taking on leadership roles and really engaging in their community. The obvious result of such involvement is a pride, a pride in your school community and your local community, and one that really creates a sense of community both within yourself and within your immediate environment. Narrowing the lens even more, we find the school community of Esqamal itself, which hosts all the sport teams, the theatre groups, as well as the service clubs focused on the school environment. These extracurriculars, from the slam team to the wrestlers, involve not only the students in their school pride, but the teachers, coaches, and audience members, who feel the losing enthusiasm we all share at Esqamal High. Again, the example of leadership, which through organizing dances, fun dates like current corn day, and workshops, absorbs the whole school in a passion, or at the very least in appreciation, for what we have: a vibrant, supportive, diverse, and involved school community. Now, these of all, of course, had a profound impact on me as a member of society. Esqamal's extracurriculars, supported by an outstanding school body of teachers, staff, and fellow students, have helped me to pursue my passion. This year, as you heard, I was given the Lorenz Award, and more recently was accepted to Columbia University. These aspirations could never have been realised, had it not been for those first steps I took in grade nine, joining the clubs that provided me with the passion, drive, and understanding to engage myself in whatever I saw would benefit my community, locally, globally, or at the school level. And then, you know, I'd like to say that these extracurricular opportunities at Esqamal are for every single student that steps through those lab doors. They are there to help involve and engage students in improving their communities through a sense of support and pride. They are very there for the taking, and trust me when I say, they lead to great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa, and I think I can speak on behalf of everybody in this room that were totally amazed at your accomplishments at such a young age, and I know we'll be seeing and hearing more about you in the future, so all the best for your future, which looks extremely bright, and just you've done a wonderful job, and I know you'll continue to do so. Thank you for being here this evening and sharing with us. Trustee McNally, I just wanted to make a brief comment.
How great to see you here, Tessa. You're in my family of school, the Esqamal family, and how very wonderful to hear from you here tonight. All very good wishes for your future, and I know that's sure to be interesting and successful. As a former teacher myself, I'm really pleased to see your recognition of the accounting hours of volunteer time for teachers after all you did.
Thanks, trustee McNally. And Tessa, if you wish to leave to go on and do some other things, I'm sure you have plenty of things to do before you put your head on your pillow tonight. You're welcome to leave now, and thank you, Colin, for being here with your very, very extremely focused and dedicated and just extraordinary student. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our community presentations. We have two people to speak to us, and we have five-minute... Five minutes per presentation, so I'd like to call upon Sheila Webster, a parent who wishes to talk to us about class composition. Thank you, Sheila.
I'd like to thank the board of trustees who take the time to listen to me. I am a proud parent of two students in the school district. It seems to be ESQ family schools, namely because they are both ESQ family schools. My daughter is at Esqamal High School, a gifted learner in the Chinese program. Very good. My son is not going to high school yet and has a disability. It's not a learning disability. He has bounced from low institutions rooms to regular classrooms, to high institutions rooms, and actually regular classrooms, and unfortunately, every time he gets back into a regular classroom, we hit him. He gets put in with five other IEPs. And I urge the trustees, I understand, it doesn't work. There is not enough support in regular classrooms to support more than poor children in those classrooms. It doesn't matter the size of the class. My son's in the smallest class possible at his grade one. But you put him in with, this year, five other IEPs, two of which are learning disabilities, three of which are behavioural, and then him. He is neither a behavioural problem, nor does he do anything but thrive academically. All of his problems revolve around social and emotional needs. He also happens to bring the most funding into that classroom. He is on the second highest level of funding available within the classroom, and it anchors me, frustrates me, and he won't treat me exactly to go in week after week after week because social and emotional needs fail to get that when he's in a regular classroom. So every year, I have a hard decision the first or second week in June when it comes to placing him for next year. Do I go through a year like I'm going through this year where I know that only there's going to be luck and better work, unmanageable, so that his academic needs can be met, or to a place within a classroom where I know his social and emotional needs will be met, and his academic needs won't? So I urge this board, I urge our... Six, seven, maybe even eight IEPs in a single classroom that you have adequate trained resources in place to deal not just with the learning disabilities or the behavioural IEPs, but for all children on IEPs. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you for sharing your personal concerns, and I'm sure all of us will take those to heart and our considerations. I'd like to now call upon Joanne Strasberg, also a parent who wishes to discuss class composition. Joanne?
Good evening. My name's Joanne, and I'm here to tell a story. I'm here to tell a story, my son's story. It's a success story, and I'm very happy to be here to share this with you tonight. My son is... Has an IEP, and he was designated with Asperger's Syndrome, which is a form of autism. I have another son who is in grade ten at Reynolds, doing phenomenally. He's a mainstream student. He's doing absolutely phenomenal. My grade twelve student with the IEP has a history, and I'm going to tell you. Grade three, he was having trouble learning, and with the teacher and my husband and I, we decided to have assessed with the learning problems and found out that yes, there were learning disabilities there, so an IEP was formed for him in the classroom. Grade three went into grade four, and the report cards were not improving. They kept saying, "Does not need expectations, needs work on this, needs help on that." He was passed on to grade five, and then grade six, and then to grade seven. He had fallen through the cracks, and what had happened was, the IEPs in the classroom were above the limit. There was a limit at that time, and they were more than could be handled. So the help that was spread so thin, my son had fallen right through the cracks. When he went into grade seven, his math level was grade 2.66. His reading was grade three, and he was going into grade seven. We had tried tutors, we had tried inside help, and the product system was letting us down, until Cedar Hill, he went into grade seven, and we got him into the resource room. There was a special ed classroom there. Mrs. McDonald was a teacher, phenomenal teacher. This completely turned him around. There was computer-generated software courses there that he worked with. He worked with Curthwell, which is a writing program. He worked with Math Concepts, which was a self-paced program, so that he could go in, work at his pace, and continue on. Grade seven, when he was there for that one year, he went more than two grade levels up. In grade eight, he continued on to the point where he went into Reynolds Secondary, grade nine at grade level. He was feeling successful. He was actually feeling so successful that he was excited about school. He went into Reynolds, and he was a part of the resource room in Reynolds every semester. He would have a resource room so that he would have his support. He'd be in the mainstream classroom, but the resource room is always helping him out. In grade eleven, he had two different recording periods, where he had a 4.5 and a 4.75 GPA. This is a kid that was failing and falling through the cracks. He's about to be graduating this June, and we couldn't be happier. It's a real true success story, and now he's been accepted into a school in Vancouver to continue on his passion. So what I'd like to talk about briefly is Bill 22, which highly concerns me, because Bill 22 states here, there will be no limits on the number of students with designations per regular class. So if you would remember what happened to my son when he was in the lower grades, and even though there was a limit to the classes, the IEPs were above the limits, and he fell right through. I think Bill 22, the language in Bill 22, can be very damaging, and I'm thinking of all the students that are going to be coming up in the class. He's finishing, but what about the children that are starting, starting their school careers? I know that in this room, there are some supporters of Bill 22, and it's upsetting, and I really wish and hope that whoever you are, you would reconsider and withdraw your support because it's not going to work. All I can say is that if my son had gone through the school system with Bill 22 in place, I wouldn't be here talking about a success story, about a kid who has success and carry on, that's going to be a wonderful person. I would probably be home with this school dropout.
Thank you, Joanne, for sharing your story as well this evening. We're now moving on to trustees' reports. I haven't had anybody put their names forward, but at this point, I see trustee Nor, trustee Horstman, trustee McNally. So we'll start with trustee Nor in this two-minute presentation. Trustee Nor and then Horstman, and then McNally.
Thank you very much. I'd like to express my appreciation to both parents for the time they've taken to share their personal experience in our system, and I want you to know that I've heard everything you've said, and I'll do everything I can to advocate for you. And I know Aaron personally, and I'm filled with his success, so I just want to say that I didn't attend any school visits this March, primarily because of the spring break, but I did stand alongside our EAs and psychologists and speech and language therapists and teachers during the three days of strike action. And I need to be very clear to the public that I absolutely support our teachers' position, and that this bargaining that they are undertaking is to support our students. They are working in every way to support the students in the classroom. We have had approximately $300 million taken out of our funding for special needs students. It was referred to in the Supreme Court decision at approximately $275 million. We can assume in ten years that it's gone up. This is a travesty. Secondly, teachers deserve to have an increase in salary, just like every other worker in BC, at the very least, to be able to keep up with inflation. I know that many of our exam workers have had good contracts, and I know that our Deputy Minister of Education, in fact, has had a forty percent raise over the last five years. Our counselors, a ratio of one to a thousand in elementary school, that's just inconceivable. Speech and language, they have approximately a one-to-one-hundred caseload. That is just unacceptable. And we have a teacher of the hard hearing who has sixteen schools. She says that she cannot even teach. She has to just go in and check equipment and just basically move on. I sent a motion to establish a series of budget meetings to review the school planning council input and other roundtable partner groups' input and other information from the community, but for to plan the 2012-2013 budget, but my motion was defeated, and so I have been able to meet with our superintendent and have some very lengthy... A lengthy meeting, and I have another one planned for tomorrow to do the best I can to discuss budget items. I've asked for some three-year budget data, and I believe the Secretary Treasurer is working on that, so that we can look at the budget and consider some different options, if possible. I know that it's a challenging situation. I'm hoping to work with parents and increase their advocacy, because I believe that the voice of parents is going to be singularly most important in informing and putting pressure on the government of the day.
Thank you, trustee Nor. I'd like to call upon trustee Horstman.
Thank you. This month, I was able to visit Reynolds, Quadra, Lake Hill, and Brayfoot, and my family's schools, and I wanted to let the board know about the great things that were happening in one school in particular, and that was Lake Hill. At Lake Hill School, the teachers organized a drama of... The theme was about frogs in a swamp, I believe, and it was an incredible... And it was an incredible production, because they involved every single child in the school. They had costumes of different classes of need, and the kids knew all the songs and all the lines, and it was just an absolutely marvelous presentation, so I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you, trustee Horstman. I'd like to call upon trustee McNally and trustee Lauren Kahunga. We'll speak after her.
Thanks, Chair. So I did send out my report to staff for asset schools, to parent advisory council, president of the schools in the Esqaihaw group, and I'll definitely send out another email, because I got the date wrong for the special board meeting to debate and vote on the annual budget. We don't want to be getting that date wrong. It is April 16th. We need to change that so all the trustees could be here. I got an opportunity to visit a few schools. Cowichin in particular, Cowichin, or not Cowichin, Quake Flower. Quake Flower is supporting something that truly dear to my heart. It's an SPCA initiative, bark-free and/or bite-free in the classroom. I'd really like to help them with that, so if we do take some steps to support them. Animal welfare and human animal, faces always being one of my passions. Other sites that are interesting about budget reviews are, I mean, our site is really interesting. There's a place for it on our website. The Budget Begins Review is a Facebook group. If you are on Facebook, you might want to have a look at that. And Cape in Cowichin is interesting. That's an interesting account of cuts to public education since, it's documented since 2004, very interesting. In my report, I noted that the Sunshine Coast Board in Vancouver D.C. have both its letters asking for rescission of Bill 22. Sunshine Coast Board letter is amazing. And if you want to know more about my report, it's very long, probably won't read it all. If you'd like to know more, just see me after the meeting, get on the email list, and I'd be happy to send it out to you. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee McNally. I'll call upon trustee Lauren Kahunga.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, I attended the street conference, and I took an all-day workshop on autism. And one of the things that I have in a grandson that's been affected by autism really taught me a lot about some of the issues and struggles that children go through at such a young age, as well as throughout the years, just listening to some of the teachers and support staff in the workshops. So I really want to thank the parents for coming and sharing their story. Having raised kids my thoughts of special needs, I understand the importance of the class size and composition, and will advocate tyrannies for that. The second thing is being appointed to the Arts and Culture and Heritage Committee of the San Jac municipality. I've attended a meeting there, and the committee was very interested in working with our school district, so I'm looking forward to doing that. I had the privilege of going and attending the Reynolds Flash Mall and participating in that, Big Shirt Day, and wearing my big shirt that I got. Also, I attended the Vista Conference, the Vancouver Island School Trustees Association Conference, with trustee McAvoy and Horstman as well, and that was in court meeting on March the 2nd and the 3rd. And I also was out there with the teachers and listening to the teachers and some of their concerns as well around the three-day strike period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, next one. May I give an update on Esqaihaw?
Very briefly, please.
Briefly, Esqaihaw, I was at the Music at the Dog Yards, and they had, what I, it was all wonderful. They had three dinner entrees, meat, vegetarian, and vegan. Being a vegan, that hardly ever happens, so it was brilliant, just delicious.
And knowing trustee McNally, it's very important to have good even food there. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the chair's report, and I will try to be brief as well, and to report on behalf of the board. I did attend Budget Day at the Legislature on February 21st, 2012. Unfortunately, I was there along with the president of the GBTA, but unfortunately, and I think it was due to austerity measures, that there was no reception, at which I was hoping to be able to have a moment to speak with the minister, so that didn't happen. So I'll have to wait until next week. On February 24th, the superintendent and Vicki Hamlin, our executive assistant, and I attended an all-day course on governance, effective meetings, and Robert Surles' board, and I believe we all found this to be very helpful for us. On the 28th of February, Secretary Treasurer George Anholme met with Mayor Neil Jensen of Oak Bay to discuss our joint venture with Oak Bay High, as well as making the connection to increase our communications with this municipality. George and I also had a lengthy meeting with Mayor Graham Hill on March 1st, where we discussed the upcoming changes to Quake Flower Bridge and to Quake Flower School. We all agreed that there would be follow-up initiatives to ensure the needs of our students and parent population will be protected, and this meeting as well was part of our initiative to connect with another municipality within our district. On March 5th, 2012, a poll vote was conducted with respect to a motion put forward by trustee McNally to write the minister and request an independent mediator be appointed to deal with the ongoing labor dispute. Receiving a majority, a letter was sent on March 6th of 2012 to this effect. Those voting for the motion were myself, trustees Horstman, Ferris, McNally, Lauren Kahunga, and Alba, abstaining with trustee Leonard and absent with trustees Nor and McAvoy. Next week, on Monday and Tuesday, the superintendent, secretary treasurer, and principal Detwitton of Monterey, and I will be attending a conference in Richmond with the minister and the deputy minister regarding Bill 22. We're looking forward to getting clarity and understanding and intent on the bill, and hopefully be able to provide assistance to the crafting of regulations. Once we have enough information, we will share the information with all of the board and then the public for discussion. On April 24th, I will be attending the Children and Youth Advocates, Mary Ellen Tropelafon's meeting with special needs children on behalf of the board, after which I will be reporting out to the board and the public. In your pack-up, you'll note that there is a letter from the chair of San Jac School District, Wayne Hunter, regarding the protocol of trustees regarding information, and it's a clearly written letter, not necessary for me to read out, but you can read it to yourself at your leisure. I'd also like to report that in all of the ongoing labor disputes, our board has been engaging with our local teachers' association in bargaining on local issues. To date, we've had three days of very good, lengthy, thoughtful discussion, and we will be continuing that on Friday. Trustee McNally and I are the trustee representatives sitting with the bargaining team, and the tone has been very good. Lots of respect, lots of discussion, and we are hopeful that shortly we'll be signing off on something to benefit of both parties. And that concludes my report. And Vicki, I'll just give you a copy of this for the record. Thank you.
Chair, comment please.
Just a comment on your report. Thank you. It was an interesting report. I will not be able to be at the bargaining on Friday, and we might as well deal with that here, because I'm going to be attending the Centre for Civic Governance's presentations, which are some distance from here in Harrison. So if there's an alternate, that would be brilliant to set up. I was a P.
I'll be there. Thank you.
So Chair, you referenced that I was absent on my motion, but I haven't missed a meeting, so I'll just have to check.
No, I'm sorry. It was a poll vote that was done, and we didn't get a response, so we just counted you as absent, because I, you're probably busy and just didn't get it in time. It was sent on the Monday for the Tuesday. We wanted to have it to be in effect during the three-day teachers' job action. Our next item on the agenda are the board committee reports, and I'd like to call upon trustee Catherine Alba for the Education Policy Development Committee.
Thank you, Chair. The Education Policy Development Committee met after the ops meeting, so it was quite late at night, and we decided to move the revision of Policy 6141.1 and 5140.1 to the next as policy meeting, and also our follow-up on the story approach. We did have an update by trustee Lauren Kahunga on the San Jac Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee and her meeting with them. It was decided that District Principal Janine Roy will work with trustee Lauren Kahunga with the San Jac Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee to come with a presentation to our next as policy meeting. So due to the fact that we didn't have forum, we adjourned the meeting at 10:07 in the... Oh, right, and the next meeting is April 2nd.
Thank you very much, trustee Alba. I'll now call upon trustee Leonard for the Operations Policy Committee.
Thank you very much. We have two motions coming forward tonight from the ops meeting. The first one is, we had a presentation from Randy Falls, the principal of Vic High in Houghton and the Alumni Association, to ask us to approve a principal refurbishing of a multi-sport facility at Victoria High School. It was very elaborate, with lots of detail, PowerPoint with diagrams showing the different phases that they hope to bring in, extensive fundraising through the community and the Alumni Association, so very exciting presentation. So this is the motion coming before the board.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can I call those in that, on approval? Unanimous, thank you. That's your chair.
Thank you. The second motion is with regards to the right-of-way at Quake Flower School. The motion that's in the board's pack-up that was circulating before has been amended, as trustee Nor has been extenuating, and trustees were circulating with an amended motion, which is sort of four parts, and that should be showing up on the screen to show the difference. So from the ops meeting perspective, nothing's really changed, it's just more elaborate than the motion that we talked about and passed there, with more detail that is required for the legality of it all. So I'll put the first part of the motion on the floor, and it must be passed unanimously, and it's up there, it's still ready to read.
Before we have to follow the amendment, because it wasn't passed from the committee we're from.
Well, I'm hoping it's a friendly amendment, because all it is is the same discussion of the same topic that we talked about in more elaborate detail than is required by law.
I think that's acceptable. Thank you. So as trustee Leonard has expressed, this has to be, as it's a motion, it has to be My apologies, I just had my package in the wrong order. The property bylaw has to be unanimous to do three readings this evening. So are there any questions before I call the question? All those, this is the unanimous approval of three readings on the motion? That's the motion that we talked about, but first of all, we have to have the three readings, and then we'll have the discussion on the motion that's on the screen. Is that clarified for everybody? Sorry. So do, I'll call the question on the motion for three readings. All those in favor, please? Trustee Lauren Kahunga, are you?
Well, that wasn't in the board's pack-up.
Yes.
Well, those motions weren't in my pack-up. So it's fine, just let me just go through it. No, it was in yellow. Do you have something in yellow?
Point of order, that three readings was here on our desks when we got here. It wasn't in the pack-up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was. Are you okay? So again, I'll call the question. All those in favor? So we're unanimous on the three readings. Trustee Leonard?
Second motion for the board is that board of education, Victoria, give all three readings to dispose of right-of-way of real property bylaw 12-01 at the March 26, 2012 board meeting.
That's one we just passed. We had to...
Yeah, we have to pass it three readings.
This is, I do apologize if we sound confused, because we are. I haven't said that.
We're not wanting to order whether the presentation was that.
If I may, Chair, what had happened is we took the original motion out of the operations meeting, but because we have to do it as a bylaw, it has to be split into two parts. So the motion out of the operations meeting was there, then the other part, then the same motion again, so the motion, it's in the package twice. And then trustee Horstman, they brought forward the addition or the correction, which is this, which is highlighted in yellow. So the only difference between what the ops committee passed was the technical legal description and the change of the word to, you have to do the word right-of-way rather than just a right-of-way.
So if I can have clarification, then, in the thing that was sitting on our desk, we passed the second one already, and now we're back to the first one?
What we should have passed, the sequence we should have passed, we shouldn't have had the same motion in there twice. We should have had the one we just passed, unanimous approval, we give three readings, and then the motion, after we agreed to give it three readings in one night, now we can pass that motion that is sitting up here on the screen, four to three, now that we agreed to read it three times.
We need to have a vote on reading it three times, because...
We're in this motion now, we're now up, trying to approve this motion, because we've already agreed that we do it two times.
So let's include one down on everybody's piece of paper.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Okay. Should I read it, or can everybody read it there? I don't need to read it all. So that's the motion now, again with the legal description before the board's reading.
Is there any discussion on this? Trustee Lauren Kahunga?
Because there's, because there's such a significant difference in this motion compared to what we had in the pack, with the legal description, I don't see it as a friendly amendment. I feel that we need to do an amendment and then the original motion.
Well, if I may, it was actually the municipality of San Jac that clarified that for legal purposes, and it is just the legal terminology instead of what we call right-of-way, which allows us to, we have no further liabilities on that right-of-way. If this passes, or as it passed as it was, it would, we would still have some liabilities to that issue, so it's strictly legal terminology.
And I guess that's my point, because it is so significantly different, I think that it should be viewed as separate motions, an amendment to the motion.
I, if you want to, it's just a matter of terminology, it's just a different description of what we're saying instead of right-of-way to San Jac municipality of 721 square meters to that. Trustee McNally and then trustee McAvoy.
I'd like to move an amendment to the original motion, which is to add the words, the legal terminology, I believe it's dedication of road right-of-way, et cetera. We can see it up there in yellow, and it'll be recorded in a minute.
Okay. All those in...
All those in...
All those in favor of the amendment? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion, now that we have the legal terminology agreed to on the amendment. Are there any further, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Madam Chair, I think we should vote on the middle motion, just to be sure.
The middle motion?
Middle motion, which officially is all three readings.
We did it.
Do it twice?
We already voted on it.
I'm not aware of those words in the one that we passed. Where does it say three readings?
Right here. Yeah. One right here.
So we pass both.
We have, this is what we have. You did pass it. Thank you, trustee Leonard.
Last motion that came out of Ops was thorough discussion about writing a letter to the Ministry of Education asking for more money in the Learning Improvement Fund. We went around the table a couple of times on how much we were going to ask for, and this was the wording that was settled on by the majority of the trustees. So that the Board of Education, the school district 61, Ray Victoria, write to the Minister of Education, asking that the government double the amount of money offered for the Learning Improvement Fund in the first, second, and third years.
Thank you. Is there a second there? Oh, we don't need a second, I'm, I'm, apologies. Is there any discussion on this motion? Trustee McNally, trustee Nor, trustee Lauren Kahunga, and then we have Tara, I'd like to make a comment.
I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, because it will assist our students in our classrooms, but I vote for it in favor of Cray's Givings, about the entire context of the Learning Improvement Fund. It comes as part of the whole Bill 22 landscape, and it's very problematic. But because it will help students in classrooms, I would vote in favor.
Thank you. Trustee Nor.
I will be voting against this motion, because it is woefully inadequate. When I spoke before, I said that $30 million would be approximately half of an EA in a school. You heard two parents speak tonight about the reality of their experience. This money has been clawed away, taken away from our students, and I'm wondering if we are inured to this deficiency mentality, that we should go to the Minister of Education and ask for a double the amount of almost nothing. And so I also wanted to suggest that when I was mentioning that the funding could provide for teachers, the chair suggested that I was negotiating at the table and at PAC meetings on behalf of teachers, and that absolutely is not the case, I would like to make that clear to the public. Teachers are central in the role they play to provide education for our students in the concentric circles, you have the student, the teacher, and the family, and they ripple out from there. And this was what I was hoping to do, is advocate for the, on behalf of our students. I know that we should have $300 million in the province, and then perhaps we could have more EAs, and more speech and language, and more counselors, and more psychologists. And I'd like to just finish with one statistic here, this is from Silas White, who is the chair, I believe, for the Sunshine Coast, and he states this in his letter to the minister about his very, about their board's concerns about this Bill 22. Says, "Well, BC public school enrollment declined 1.5% between 2006, '07 and 2010, '11. The number of funded special needs students climbed to 14.5%." And so we see that there is a deliberate and intentional withdrawal of funds from some of our responsible students. So for that reason, I will not support this doubling of an amount that is so woefully inadequate.
Thank you, trustee Nor, trustee Lauren Kahunga.
Thank you. I too, you know, have decided that I would vote against this motion, and I really would like my comments recorded, because I don't feel, it's not because I don't agree that we could use every little penny in the classroom. What I disagree with is that it's part of an entire package. And I don't believe that the minister is going to allow us to take part of it and reject the rest of it. And I really feel strongly that, you know, we heard at the last meeting that it's probably 0.6 of an EA in each school, and so if we double that, we'd be, we're talking about maybe 1.2 of an EA in each school. And I just really feel strongly that, you know, we need to send a stronger message to government that it's not, it's totally insufficient, and that we totally disagree with Bill 22. And by taking a piece of the package, I just feel strongly that we're basically agreeing to Bill 22. And so for those reasons, I've decided that I'm voting against it.
Thank you. I'm going to put myself on the list of trustee Alpha, after trustee Alpha, and Tara is the next person to speak, but just a point of clarification for trustee Lauren Kahunga, we don't record verbatim comments in our minutes, unfortunately. So Tara, please.
I followed the instructions.
It's our special trick for that, right?
Is that working?
I think maybe it's...
This is new, you're the first one to use that.
I'm lucky, first one, I'm just going to speak.
George is coming to help.
As a representative of the 1,500 teachers, your employees in the school district, I would ask you to vote against this. The Learning Improvement Fund is a reprehensible answer to what was a reprehensible action of the government in 2002, when it eliminated guaranteed supports for students. It's really important to understand that what we need is guaranteed levels of support for every child who requires it, and the Learning Improvement Fund is a model that is completely antithetical to that. The Learning Improvement Fund suggests that we have a minimal pot of money, which is completely inadequate by an order of 10, as has been pointed out, and that parents, teachers, and administrators are going to be in a race to, in a race to have the pennies that aren't there. This sets us up for antagonism within the district, it sets us up to have winners and losers, it sets us up so that students who have parents who can advocate are going to be the winners, and students who have parents who can't advocate, well, are going to be the losers. And this is absolutely wrong. We need to go back to where we were pre-2002, we need to have guaranteed levels of support for every child, and that is what our previous contract language had. I would urge you to reject this, to reject the Learning Improvement Fund, and to write to the minister and say, what we need is a return to targeted funding, where every child gets the funding that they deserve, so that their education can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. I'd now ask trustee Alpha to make her comments, thank you.
Well, I'm going to be voting for this motion. I've heard what's been said around the table, and I've listened, and I think that some excellent points have been made. But I also think that students in the classroom right now need help. And it is woefully inadequate, the amount of money that is being asked for. But it is more than we have now. And I'm going to be supporting this motion, because anything that I can get into the classrooms to serve the needs of students, I think is important to get there. I think that we can advocate, and I think we can certainly protest, and I think that there are other options that we can, that we can use. But right now, these kids need the money, right now. And they're going through our education system right now, without anywhere near what they need. But if I can get 0.6 or 1.2 of an EA in a school, I'm going to go for that. I'm going to continue to advocate in every way I can, in every other venue I can find. But I'm going to support this motion, because hopefully, we might be able to get double the money at this point.
Thank you. I'm going to speak, and then I have trustee Ferris and trustee Horstman, just, oh, trustee
Just a couple of things. With respect to Bill 22 and the letter that's been sent out from Coast Mountainside, personally, I thought that was a bit premature. I'm looking forward to attending the meetings next week, because I think at this point, all of us are speculating as to what the intent of meeting and the application of the act is going to be. And I'm looking for more information, and actually, the opportunity for input. And then the opportunity to come back to this table and have a better discussion with the trustees and the public, in order for us to best put forward what this district believes is the best supports possible for all the students in our classroom. I don't believe that we've ever had guaranteed levels of support. Before this, we've always, we've never had enough money for special needs. So I'm going to support this motion, and for the reasons that trustee Alpha has said, I'm going to take any money, thank you very much, and strongly advocate for more. So if this is just a beginning, that's fine, and that's where I'll start from, and I hope that this table will continue to advocate for more, and not just throw away money that's being given to us, the opportunity for that money that will help in some fashion, it may not be all of what we need, but it'll be up to us as a district to manage to the best of our ability how those funds are utilized. And until we know what Bill 22 is, and when we sit around and discuss this, and talk about how the composition of our classes are going to look at, that will be our decision, not Bill 22's. That's just an outline. So I will be supporting this motion. Thank you, and I ask trustee Ferris to make his comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with many of the comments that have been made here. The Learning Improvement Fund is really just tinkering with a serious issue that we have in our province. I'm pretty disappointed after the discussions that parents and trustees and the minister over the last six months, that something more substantive, not just financially, but just looking at the picture in more global fashion, that nothing more substantive didn't come forward. Nonetheless, I have to agree with my fellow trustees, I'm going to take what they give me. We can ask them, as this motion does, to improve that pot of money. I look forward to, hopefully, our board being able to top that up on the steering wheel, see how the budget unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ferris. A call upon trustee Horstman, please.
Thank you. I would also urge all trustees to support this motion. First of all, it's not a given that the ministry will double the money, this is us advocating for them to double the money. And yes, we could always use more money, and our job as trustees is to continue to advocate at the top of our lungs in every opportunity. Our chair will be doing that enrichment in the next week, and we will be doing it individually and collectively as a board. But in the meantime, if the ministry agrees to double the money, we definitely can use that to the good of our children, as trustee Alpha said. If the ministry doesn't agree to double the money, well, we'll take the single money and use that to the good of our children as well. We're not going to turn down money. This is an opportunity to ask for twice what they've given. In fact, basically, it starts the ball over, because as we all know, more money is needed to do the work that needs to be done. But I would definitely urge unanimous support of this motion, because why in the world would we turn down the opportunity to ask them to double what they offered?
Thank you, trustee Horstman. I'd now ask trustee McAvoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to, actually, at least the trustee Horstman and I would also urge my colleagues to support this motion. I have some difficulty with the logic that until we get everything, it's better to have and affect nothing. And our responsibility is to our kids, and if we can get any additional money for our kids, we should get that, we should get that money. We should not wait for perfection, we should not wait for the utopian moment where we're going to get, you know, what we believe is necessary. We have responsibility for our kids, and I think this board should send a strong message, a motion put forward by trustee Horstman, to get behind this, to urge the government to get additional funds for the classroom. So the other aspect that is curious to me is that this whole notion of somehow people will be competing for this money. Every dollar that comes to this district, this board makes decisions about how we allocate those funds. This is no different from any of that. The dollars that we have, and they are not sufficient, every budget time, we make decisions as board members, and we are responsible to the public for making those decisions. And we will continue to do that, and we have to, we'll make those decisions further, when this money, hopefully additional money, if we get behind this motion, will come to our district and other districts. And we'll continue to make responsible decisions around allocating those much-needed funds, though they are not sufficient. They are much-needed funds, and we will make those decisions in a wise manner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee McAvoy. Trustee Nor.
Thank you. At this point, there's $30 million. As trustee Ferris said, he's been very disappointed in this amount of money, given all of the advocacy. I feel that there will be no response, and I also want to make it clear that there is no intention to throw away money. The $30 million is there, that's all that's going to be there, and I'm not prepared to play the incremental game.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Tara, the last one, and then I'm going to call a question.
I just wanted to say, it's been suggested that this is your only option. However, if you choose to ask for an additional $30 million, you can ask for it in any form you want. The announcement that the funding for next year has already come out. When you add inflation, you are getting a $130 million cut to this year's budget, which means that the $30 million puts you $100 million behind. That's the situation that we're in. I have no issue with the board asking for additional money. I absolutely think you should ask for additional money. What you shouldn't do is ask for it in the Learning Improvement Fund, you should ask for adequate funding for your budget for next year, and you should base that on what the needs of students are.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed, please? You can't vote twice, Catherine. Thank you, the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is D1, Secretary Treasurer's report. George, if you would, please.
On page...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Superintendent's report, that's right, we did amend it, I keep writing, I've got two agendas going on, one that I can write notes on, write notes on, and the other is the regular. Trustee Lauren Kahunga had asked a question about the district's position on report cards, and we added that on the agenda, and the superintendent's going to speak to that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, report cards that were scheduled to occur prior to the passing of Bill 22 are not scheduled to be made up. Report cards that are scheduled to occur after the passing of Bill 22 will be sent home at their regularly scheduled times. As well, I have been told that it's possible that we'll get a letter from the Deputy Minister regarding the minister's applications on report cards.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Are there any questions? Trustee Lauren Kahunga?
Thank you. So if I can make sure that I understand you, so basically, anything that was up to Bill 22 is not to be made up. Is that correct? Is that correct?
If the board would take it upon itself to schedule additional reporting periods, that would be a decision of the board. But principals are not scheduling any additional reporting periods unless required to by either the board or the minister.
So, so all, so are the ones...
You should have voted.
I know.
So it's, I'll say that.
So then, are the ones that, I guess what I'm wondering about, are there any that are kind of caught in between? Like, I'm listening to the news reports today, and I'm just wondering, are there any of our schools, or is everybody on the same flat schedule? Are there any schools that are going to be affected, or there are some that are going to have to make happen, some that aren't?
Nobody's making up at this point. However, there is not, it is not the same across the district. If, if you, I'll give you an example. Obei, being on a linear system is not going to have the next reporting period until June. So those who, that's their next scheduled time, and that's after passing of Bill 22, that is after the job action has ceased. Therefore, unless the board instructs us differently, the next reporting period for Obei will be in June. Reynolds is on a semester system and has a report card that is due out in the middle of April, or the third week of April. That report card will go out as scheduled because we are no longer in a strike situation.
Trustee McAvoy.
So what happens to students whose, and I think it's both grade 10 and 11 kids in particular, because their, those marks still count towards those scholarships that can be gotten. So if I'm a grade 11 student in a semester system, what has happened to my marks in the first semester that were reported out in a report card? How am I going to, how do I, how do I get my scol, let's say, got to an unlikely, but I never know, but a few ways? What happens to that student? How do they, how does that work?
So this is still a decision that we're looking for an answer from. We have, we do not know at this point about first semester marks. So if a student took physics 11 first semester and does not need it for graduation this year, at this point, we will not have a mark for physics 11. Having said that, we will expect that there will be some questions that will be sent to the Labor Relations Board, and we are waiting for the clarification. What we are saying at this point in Greater Victoria is that the report cards that will be going out in April, whether it be in elementary, middle, or secondary, will be a snapshot of how the child is doing at this time. If there's, if there are marks that will be included from first semester or from the first term, that will only come after instructions from the LRB and VCTF.
So, so I guess the message then to parents of kids in grade 10, 11, both those marks and need them, we don't know at this point, is the answer?
The answer is we don't know at this point. We are waiting somewhere in the province. There will be report cards that will start to go out. That will become an issue, and the issue will be decided at the LRB with either the VCTF or VCPC bringing it forward.
I have to say that as a trustee, as a parent, as somebody in the community, that can turn to me a good deal for those kids, to say that, to be frank.
And I don't want you to think that we're not taking this seriously. We are. But until we get further clarification, this is what we're understanding to be the rules that we're living under, and I'm sure further clarification will be coming up. That's why I mentioned that we are expecting that there will be a letter from the deputy minister expressing the minister's views on report cards. But we are not asking, we're not in a position right now where teachers in any school are putting together marks. But as soon as that happens, we will expect to have more information. But at this point, certainly, the instructions that we'd be giving would be that we are asking for a snapshot on how the child is doing at this point now.
Thank you. Trustee Leonard.
To the superintendent, what you just worded that was, I would say, if you said that, if somebody takes it to the LRB, is it not there now?
No. As I understand it, it is not, okay, I think, that, remember that Bill 22 was only passed on March the 16th. Then most of the province are just returning from spring break today. A good chunk of the province, not a good, but certainly there are districts that are on spring break this week. And so it all depends upon when report cards are due. There has to be an issue first. And when, when teachers are asked to do report cards, whether or not it includes marks from first semester or from the first couple of terms will then be decided at the LRB if we cannot come to an agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Seeing no further hands for comments, I'll now move on to Secretary of Treasuries' report. George, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reporting notice required for poll results. We had a poll vote to approve the third reading of the amended annual budget back in February 21st, and we like to report that that motion was passed, and we sent in the required documentation to the province.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, do we have any reports from trustee representatives? I don't believe we have. Trustee Lauren Kahunga already reported on her art inheritance and scent. So the next item on our agenda is...
The ECSDA statistics was submitted for protection council.
Thank you. Moving on, oh, sorry, trustee McNally did you have your member? Moving on, our next item is new business notice of motion, and trustee Nor has a motion to put forward, and I believe you've got copies that you can provide both for Vicki to put up on the screen and then to trustees as well?
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nor, do you have any extras that you can possibly hand out to anybody in the... Well, I'm just thinking of in the audience because unfortunately, without having this ahead of time, we can't put it up on the overhead. Are we interested? In any, it doesn't matter that it wasn't, we don't, do we have enough for the people in the audience to be able to share?
I have, I gave one.
I can, I can share, but you have one? Okay, let's just move on. Thank you. Thanks, trustee Lauren Kahunga. trustee Nor, please.
Thank you. I apologize for not having extra copies. Next time, I will have more available, and I will do everything I can to have the motion prepared within four days. So the motion moved Nor and seconded Kahunga, Lauren Kahunga, I don't have it on there, but that the Board of Education of School District 61 write a letter to the Minister of Education, calling on the government to repeal Bill 22, and instead have an independent mediator appointed through the Labor Relations Board. So having had some conversation with a number of partner groups and having read some critiques of Bill 22 and having looked at the information in Sunshine Coast's letter regarding Bill 22, I just formulated some points here. Bill 22 is in violation of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. It parallels the same law that the B.C. government put in place for health care workers back in 2001, and the Supreme Court of Canada ruled that it was unconstitutional in 2007. Bill 22 is undemocratic as it eliminates workers' rights to bargain collectively for their working conditions. Pre-collective bargaining is a fundamental principle of all Canadian workers within the year. Bill 22 is invalid because it is in contravention of the B.C. Supreme Court decision of April 2011. That rule of Bill 28 prohibited teachers' rights to bargain working conditions. It is also unconstitutional because it imposes conditions on the mediator rather than allowing the mediator to truly, to be truly independent and to serve as a trusted neutral influence on the two parties. A mediator who represents the government would be perverse, that is a quote from School District 46. And finally, good faith bargaining is not possible when one side sets in place preconditions.
Thank you, trustee Nor. Are there any comments? I'm going to take them from trustees first, okay? I've got you on the list, Tara, but McNally and then Lauren Kahunga. Oh, and Alpha.
Thank you, we have an amendment.
And the amendment?
That the Board of Education of School District 61 instruct the chair to write...
We're doing that in the chair.
Yeah. I'm trying, we're a little captive over here to avoid friendly amendments since they don't really exist. That's why I'm doing it formally.
Well, then, the board writes, the chair always writes.
Okay. I just wondered if you wanted the wording, Kahunga, we can let that die for at least five seconds, if I agree.
My name would be on it, don't worry. Trustee Lauren Kahunga, please.
Yes, I'm speaking in favor of the motion, and, you know, when you take a look at what Vancouver Sun writer has written and different things that have come up in the media in the last little while, and going through the documents, there's so many issues that I have looked at, and I think that trustee Nor has certainly put it together in a really good package about all of the things that are, that are so wrong and flawed with the whole bill, from removing collective bargaining rights to paying teachers if they have more students, and we heard from parents tonight that really talked about the whole purpose of having, not having more than three or four IEPs in the classroom because of the impact that it has on all students in the classroom. This pays teachers to take on extra students. So, you know, there's so many things that I find so wrong with the bill, and so I definitely will be, will be in its favor.
Thank you, trustee Alpha. I'm voting in favor of the motion. The, the letter that was written by the chair of the Sunshine Coast School District 46, he makes so many excellent points, but I think tonight, the excellent point that was made was, were the points that the two parents made. It just comes down to the whole idea that as human beings, we have rights, and our students have rights as well. Bill 22 absolutely decimates these rights. And I think, you know, as I'm teaching grade six students about the convention on the rights of a child, Bill 22 falls right over the top of those rights that are, that are country signed onto under the United Nations. There is something inherently cynical about Bill 22 that just appalls me. I have no words left because I can't say what I really think in a public meeting because it's far too strong. But when we sign on to international agreements, like the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, unlike the Charter of Rights and Freedoms in Canada, and then Bill 22 comes along, and as Canadian citizens, we don't stand up. It makes me think, of all the soldiers who died to give us this democracy in World War I, in World War II, in the Korean War, it makes me think, they were willing to put so much more on the line. Bill 22, all we need to do is raise our voices and say, this is wrong, and it is so wrong. It's wrong for our students, it's wrong for our school community, it's wrong for our teachers. There's, there's nothing in this bill that I can see that is good. I strongly support this motion. I think Bill 22 is probably one of the most cynical, evil pieces of legislation I've ever seen, brought forward by any government anywhere, except perhaps in communist countries in the worst of the worst times. It's a dark day.
Thank you, trustee Alpha. I'm just going to speak and then trustee McNally. Well, I agree with part of this motion, which is about the independent mediator appointed through LRB, which this board wrote about. I'm reluctant about calling the government to repeal Bill 22. And it's for the purpose I spoke about earlier. This board has yet to discuss or understand fully the implications of Bill 22. I think a lot of us are reading it, and the tendency for these things is for people to read differently. The interpretations can be different. And I think it is prudent for us to take some time to better understand the legislation. There's nothing saying that, once we have a better understanding collectively of the bill, that we can't move forward with a motion such as this if we so choose. But at this time, I think it's premature for us to be calling on a repeal of the full legislation. There's still some decisions coming forward from the B.C. Supreme Court next month with respect to this bill, so that hasn't even come into effect yet. So I would just, I'm, I'm going to vote against this motion. I think it's premature in repealing, although I do support the independent mediator. Thank you. Trustee McNally.
I'll have it in favor enthusiastically for the favor of this motion. I think that Bill 22 is probably going to be found to the VCTF challenges currently underway to be unconstitutional, undemocratic, and illegal. I've seen so much legislation come out of this government that really doesn't fit the requirements that citizens would have for justice. It, many of the laws seem to fit the requirements of expedience for the current government, and that really upsets me as a citizen. It's, to me, the worst of apathy to accept Bill 22, and this is an opportunity for me to reject it, so I'm going to take that opportunity. Evil may be a strong word to use here, trustee Alpha has used it, but, you know, it does resonate with me. There's some political evil going on here, and it's going to have repercussions. It's the bigger picture here, and we all know the same, that can guide us in after this, and all this is necessary for evil to triumph, trust me, we can do nothing.
Thank you, trustee McNally. Tara? Thank you, trustee McNally. Tara?
Much of my own thoughts have been settled already, but let me add the voices of your employees, your teachers, the people in classrooms every day. To some extent, I don't need to add their voices, because I think that the actions that teachers have already taken, our three-day strike was in fact in response to Bill 22, gives you a pretty clear indication about how teachers feel about this bill. The bill is bad for children, and it's bad for teachers, it is bad for relationships in schools, and it is bad for every citizen of this country and this planet. Children will be subject to larger classes, to more complex classes, to classes that have less support. As was already mentioned, the bill envisions a cash-for-kids scenario, in which teachers are paid additional money for having larger classes. Teachers have roundly rejected this. We don't, we don't seek to improve class sizes simply because it's a workload issue, and we think that's the way thing for kids. This bill is bad for teachers, because it terrifically impairs our ability to free collective bargaining. Teachers have spent many years, and many days, hours, weeks, much energy to work with employers, with boards, and provincial government to develop mutually agreed-to collective agreements. Those ensure both, that both parties are, accept the terms of those agreements, and that we have equal say in how those come about. What this bill does is essentially terminates the collective bargaining process as we know it. It allows the government to simply say, fine, we'll sit down with you, and we'll talk for seventy-eight sessions, and then we'll write legislation to do what we want to do anyway. And that's not just bad for teachers, that's actually bad for every citizen, both of this province and this country. And we've seen, this bill is modeled on the bills, those that have come out from the Harper government, and we've seen the trend in this country towards the dissolution of what our constitution acknowledges as a fundamental human right, which is free collective bargaining. I think we should act now, and I hope we will act with us. We need many voices in order to convince any transitive government to repeal this legislation. We need the voices of school boards, we need the voices of parents, we need the voices of community members. Teachers are certainly prepared to act on our own, because we feel so strongly about this. As I'm sure you're aware from reading the news reports, we will be voting on an action plan. There was some irony in the presentation today by one of our students, who talked about the great richness that comes from extracurricular activities, and the hundreds and thousands of volunteer hours that teachers put in. This bill has forced teachers, by removing the right to collective bargaining, to contemplate withdrawing those voluntary services. We can fix this if we work together, and we need your support to do that.
Thank you, Tara. Trustee Ferris and McAvoy?
Well, Bill 22 is a difficult piece of legislation to be standard-bearer for. I have to agree. However, I think that what we need to do as trustees is to hear from the Minister. We need to find out what the implications of Bill 22 are, how then will affect our students in our district. And then, I think, as trustees, as opposed to legislators, because we aren't legislators, we don't have any control over whether this bill passes or it doesn't pass. But what we can do as trustees is to make recommendations, positive recommendations, that hopefully might allow our province to move forward in a positive manner. Thank you. I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you, trustee Ferris. Trustee McAvoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I have to say that on every occasion, and there have been many over the last number of years since I've been living in this province, that governments have acted to bring these disputes to a conclusion through legislation, it's deeply troubled me, whether it's been social credit, whether it's been MDP, or whether it's been political party. And this, in many respects, is troubling, because it means that the parties are not able to resolve matters at the table. And that, I think, from everyone's perspective, is the way these things ought to be resolved. In terms of the content of the legislation, some of the things you've expressed, I'm prepared to have the U.S. Chair attend a meeting to gather further information, to bring it back to this table, for all trustees around this table, to gather further information for that matter. Without being overly critical of my colleague, trustee Nor, I find, in principle, I find it very difficult on this end, other matters, particularly ones of great significance, that they come to the table without any notification to the public, let alone colleagues around the table. And I think that's, I think it's, that's probably not an appropriate mechanism, I think, in which to have this kind of discussion. And so, I think it behooves us all to, and there are many views, and I really understand that. I want to thank my colleague on the table who expressed very clear views about what they think, issues on constitutionality and so forth, which ultimately, I guess, will be potentially, potentially, I should say, doubled by a court. And I think the Teachers' Federation has indicated already publicly that they intend to challenge legislation. Until that happens, it's premature to say that it's unconstitutional. It may well be, we will see with the passage of time. There's gathered that input and others, and I think there's been a wide array of views already expressed, both pro and con amongst members of the public. But I think it behooves us to at least give the public some notice that in fact, this is something that the board is entertaining, that it has the opportunity, as she will have shortly, to gather more information and to bring it back here. And so, on that basis, I am not able to support this motion put forward at this time.
Thank you, trustee McAvoy. Trustee Alfa, and then Nor for closing.
I'm moving to table this motion to the next board meeting, after Chair Archie Ten has had a chance to attend the meeting in Vancouver, and then we could reconsider this at the next board meeting.
All in favor of tabling the motion until the next opportunity to report out to all trustees? Would that include having a discussion with, as to how we're...
Yes, I'm tabling it actually to the next board meeting, so the April board meeting.
Which is also the budget meeting, just bearing that in mind. So, that's a full meeting agenda. Okay, all those in favor of tabling the motion? Six? Okay, keep your hands up, please, so... And you're, any opposing votes? Thank you. The motion is tabled to the board meeting in April, April 16.
Chair Archie Ten, any closing comment?
No, it's been tabled, thanks. You'll be able to revisit it at the next board meeting, thanks, trustee Nor. Next item on the agenda is just correspondence that's been received. It's in your pocket, I refer to it in my report, so there's no need to read it. I will tell you, you're all deliberate, I expect, and having come through the public school system, I suspect also. I'd like to actually turn the next item over to Secretary Trezor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to report out over in the camera meeting, three individual items. The first, the board approved the capital bylaw as proposed by the Minister of Education to proceed with the construction or order of work on this finishing the design of the Oak Bay High School. The second and third items are related to the board's ratification of QP 382 and the QP 947 contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary Trezor, and congratulations to our QP locals on successful ratification of their agreements. And if there's nothing further, I'm motioning to... Did you have something further?
I just wanted to point out that on the notice of motion for education policy, it says Mr. Jim Cambridge is the superintendent of Sandwich, and is actually soup, and Dr. Kevin Elder is actually sandwich.
You're correct, and thank you very much for that clarification. So...